The Select Board meeting to order at this point. And we're going to start with everybody that's able to stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Oh, man, what a night.
Murray.
Mr. Murray. Yes, we're going to call the meeting to order by roll call.
Human present.
Smith present.
Krantz and present, kind of. All right, so have you all had a chance to review and make any changes to our minutes of October 25?
Motion to approve the minutes from October 25.
Second.
All those in favor, you and I?
Smith and I.
Okay, so tonight, we actually have a public meeting. I will entertain a motion to open our public meeting for our tax classification presentation by members of the Assessors Board.
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor, you and I?
Smith and I.
Krantz and I.
All right, I think we have to open our meeting now also.
Yes, you do, Mr. Murray.
So, I'm Don Murray.
Dick Shepherd.
And we're the Board of Assessors this evening. And Rob Heckman is also here with us, who's a representative from RRG.
Hi, Rob.
He's a representative from RRG who does a lot of our tax work for us.
Okay, so who do we have speaking?
Hmm?
Who do we have speaking?
Me.
Would you like to go to the podium and introduce yourself, Mr. Murray, so we can get along with this? Podium, please.
Can do.
We want everybody to know who's on the Assessors Board.
Yeah. I'm sure if they knew.
And everybody knows that the Select Board really has little to nothing to do with what you're doing.
Well, thank you. But right now, we are here to conduct the classification hearing. This is our annual meeting with the Board of Selectmen. And when we get into this, we, when we do any explanation, most of our work is done with just letters. So I'm going to give you a couple of the words that go with those letters right now. The R is for residential houses. The C is for commercial properties. The I is for industrial properties. And P is for personal property, okay? Because a lot of times, we would just say CIP, and everybody would go, what's CIP? So now you know, okay? And during this, we have to decide whether we're going to have a split tax rate or a single tax rate. And with our recommendation, I think we're going to stay with the single tax rate this year. And it just, it's not justified to go with a double right at this time. And with that, that's what I'm here to tell you. And now, Richard's got something to say.
I simply would add to that.
Podium, please.
Podium, please.
Sorry about that.
You can go up front if you're going up.
Before I do that, I'm going to hand each one of you tablets that we produce downstairs for residents. And it's something that Rob does. Let me just get in here for one second.
Trust me, he'll be very quick. He understands that Murray doesn't like redundancy.
So I would simply say that, and reiterate what Mr. Murray said a minute ago here, is that we do have this annual meeting, and it is to set the tax rate, number one. And secondly, it's to make the recommendation on whether we do a shift. It's either a shift of one, or do we do a split rate? The tax, the new tax rate, and this is the good news for everybody, is that the new tax rate is $13.31 per thousand. Now, I've been on the board for about seven years now, something like that. And we've come down every single year, the time that I've been on the board. Of course, that was my doing, but not really. I've always given credit to the rest of the people in town who make their budgets up and go to the Finance Committee or the Capital Committee, and they stay within their budgets, at least they make long-term recommendations, but they stay within their budget. And that allows us, the rest of us, to come up with a reasonable tax rate. Now, last year's tax rate was $14.30, so we're down from that to $13.31. The bad news to this whole thing is that this was a year that we did a revaluation, a big revaluation by the State Department of Revenue requires it. And that caused our valuations to bump up considerably. As Dave Manzello, Rob's boss, told me earlier today, Sterling is a very desirable community to live in. There are a lot of people that want to be here, and there are a number of reasons for that. It's because we have a great school system. We have two school systems within the town, as you well know, Monty Tech and Wachusett Regional. We have a great public safety group here in town, and just a lot of other factors that add up to Sterling being a desirable community to live in. And so we do have a lot of people that are coming here. Unfortunately, some of the values of housing are going up, obviously, and so people are paying big money. Interest rates are staying high, but they are starting to slip down a little bit, so mortgage rates are coming down slightly, not much, but very slightly. And there's a hope that they may come down even more in the future. So with that said, I think that we're going to make this recommendation that we, to you, that we go with a factor of one, a shift of one, and be consistent with what we've done over the previous years, because if we, and Rob can explain this to you in much better detail, because if we did that, if we shifted and had a split rate, we would affect a lot of people that we don't want to affect, and that would be primarily chapter landholders, people who are farmers in this community. We know we are a farming community under Chapter 145 of our general bylaws. So with that, I'm going to introduce you to Rob Heckman, so from RRG.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rob Heckman. I'm the Associate Assessor here in Sterling. I work for you and for RRG, who's contracted through Sterling. So I'll try not to be too redundant or reiterate too much of what's already been said, but I'll walk through this packet that you all have, and then if anyone else would like a copy of the packet, feel free to reach out to my office afterwards, and you can take a look through it, or if we have any laying around, if she wants to take a look. Sure. All right, so on page two, you'll see, right now, we're at the classification hearing steps in this process, so that's where we do this presentation. The selectmen approve, sorry, the select people review and discuss tax shift options and vote for a tax shift factor on that point. So to start, we have the levy. For those who don't know, the levy is the amount of property taxes that are to be raised. The levy amount is determined by the budget. The total amount of approved budget, less revenues from other sources like motor vehicle excise, municipal fees, and state aid, is the amount to be raised from property taxation. In Sterling, the levy to be raised is estimated to be $22,825,301.72, and this represents in total a 5.12 increase over last year's levy of $21,711,677.49. The levy ceiling, the levy ceiling is a 2.5% of the full value of town, based on the Sterling aggregate valuation last year of $1,714,898,000, sorry, $1,714,898,701. The town technically cannot levy taxes in excess of $42,872,468. This would include everything from the levy itself, the Proposition 2.5, down to debt exclusions, if there was anything large, you know, in the debt bin, and new growth revenue. That's never a number that you ever typically get to, especially in a town like Sterling, but that's just a number that's out there that's 2.5% of the total aggregate valuation of the town. New growth revenue is everything that we're able to derive from newly taxable properties. This includes new construction, additions to homes, that's everything from garages to pools, renovations, subdivisions, personal property. It could even be you subdividing lots of your land to create new lots, which are then taxed at a different amount, because it has a different assessed value than if you had everything together. So new growth for this past year is $332,242. That's the new growth total in tax revenue that we're able to accumulate. And this has been certified by the Department of Revenue, and this is a decrease from the prior fiscal year, but it's also not something that we're, we or anyone in town is able to create on their own. It's based off how much are we building, what's going on in town, how is that money able to be applied and increased for a new assessed, for increased assessed value in the town. Levy limit is also referred to as the maximum allowable levy. This is calculated by adding the 2.5% of the previous year's levy limit plus new growth revenue for the present fiscal year to last levy, last year's levy limit. Exceeding this limit is where you see the term override of a Proposition 2.5. And for us, the certified maximum allowable levy for fiscal year 2024 is at $23,405,414. Lastly, not to bore everyone with terminology, but just so we're all on the same page, the excess levy capacity is the difference between the levy and the levy limit, which is currently for this upcoming fiscal year, $597,261.28. This is more considered money that's left on the table or that we're not appropriating, not that we need to, and if we did, this would increase to a higher tax rate. So at the bottom of page three, that's where you'll see, to the Select Board, you'll see the fiscal year 2024 levy limit and the amount to be raised. Currently, we don't have anything in override, so that amount for maximum levy is $23,405,414, and that's the fiscal year levy, plus what we're allowed to increase based off Proposition 2.5, and the new growth revenue, and the debt exclusion as well. Page four, so this is just giving a copy of the LA Board, which is just showing the parcel amounts that we have for different classifications of property. It also goes into the taxable assessed value of all these properties. Just gives a nice little outline of what we have in town and what's taxable. At the bottom, you'll see evaluations by class before tax shift. It shows residential, as we stated earlier, the CIP, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Industrial this year is relatively higher than it typically would be. This is based off sale of large industrial properties that were in town that had a larger reflection on the increase in value that we had. That's not something that's typical, that's just something that happened in this past fiscal year. So typically, you wouldn't see that number be at such a higher figure than the other figures in town. So on to page five, shifting the tax burden. This is what was already stated earlier, where this is where we come to the decision of do we maintain a single tax rate, or do we go to a split tax rate? Typically, you wouldn't see a town or a city try to make a move towards a split tax rate until you got to at least 25% in commercial, industrial, and personal property. Sterling right now is sitting around 11%, I believe, and it's just, yeah, I think we're, yeah, 11.7% about. The other thing, too, with Sterling being a right-to-farm town, there are 189 Chapter 61 parcels currently in town. These would all be affected by a split tax rate. We use an example here where if we were to shift the tax rate even just 35%, that would create a difference of $17.96 for the commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts, and residential pay around $12.68. Currently, right now, the, with the average tax increase for this new year, every single family resident, if you're going to look at an average, is about $338. So with that being said, if you were going to take the 35% and switch it that way to eliminate that $338 per annual taxes for each resident, you would have to increase about $3,000 on every single commercial, industrial, and personal property, and that includes chapter land as well, which would just be an absolutely massive swing and a big hit on the right-to-farm community, that's Sterling. So like Dick had said earlier, too, it's $13.31 for the proposed tax rate. That's not obviously what we're voting on now, but that's what we'd be looking at potentially for a figure for fiscal year '24, which is lower from the $14.30 that we had for fiscal '23. And of course, values are going up, but that's kind of the give-and-take that you get.
You might want to highlight the idea that this is an estimate as far as the tax rate.
Yep, it's an estimate at the $13.31. That's kind of where we're going to be around for a figure, having run it by, having run the figures by the DOR and everyone involved, but that's roughly where we'd be looking at. It's going to be lower than it was last year. Yeah, and so I mean, shifting a tax rate, too, is not about paying less taxes or paying more, it's just about divvying up the pie. So it's not that if someone, you know, the residents pay less than the commercial, industrial, and personal properties do, it's not that they pay less taxes in general to the levy limit. It's all just how the pie's sliced, basically. And yeah, that's all I have for this. And like I said, if anyone would like a copy, I can definitely email one over. We just ran out of paper, I guess, tonight. So our recommendation from the Board of Assessors is to maintain the residential shift factor of 1.0 with the corresponding CIP factor of 1.0, maintaining the relative shares of overall tax burden between both, which is typically what we've, what we've always done here in town.
Okay. Any questions for Rob? Kirsten?
CIP, can that ever be, is that always lumped together, or can those be split? So that, let's just say we were to someday ever raise taxes in a way that it wouldn't affect the farmers, but we could maybe get more through industrial, or can that ever happen, or is it always lumped together?
I would have to look more into that. It's typically always residential and then everything else, without getting too far into it of the CIP. There are certain ways that towns and cities have tried to eliminate that, or try to create a shift factor and then give exemptions or something on top of that, but I wouldn't know anything about how that works, or the implications that the DOR would have on that, or how that would boil down. It's typically always been this and this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
David?
Well, sir, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Rob? Podium, please.
Thank you, working in Mount 33 Taff Road. I just am concerned about this. I'm concerned that everything goes on the residents instead of the businesses who are making money off being in the town. I understand the farming thing there. Could we put in a clause if we change this, or is it just easy not to do that because it's been that way and we don't need to change anything? There's a lot of elderly people in this town, and the town is aging, and they're all on fixed incomes. Not everybody has, you know, an increase in salary every year like you are when you're young, you get a coastal, a cholera raise, or you get some other raise. There's a lot of people who just do not. And I find this, I find this terrible, to be perfectly honest, that our Assessors Office or whoever is not looking into alternatives because it's easy. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? I do, I have just one question for anyone, as far as, we have, we don't really have space in town to increase our housing. We all know that, that's always been a subject for the master plan, it's, we all know that, we have a lack of space. I mean, DCR has, what, 42% of our properties, and how much do they kick in? A lot? Is that what you said, a lot?
I think it's quite 42% of what's up there. It's like.
No, I mean, but how much? Right. So, but that doesn't have any effect on any of this work that you do, Rob, as far as, we don't have any more space, so we'll always be stagnant like this, do you feel?
Stagnant in which, which way? Of an increase?
Yeah, because we're not going to be able to build a lot more houses, and, you know, renovations, as everybody knows right now, are kind of tough, you know, getting the lumber, getting whatever you need to build a garage or a barn or whatever. So that doesn't have any effect on this at all. We don't look at that, it's just a matter of, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, those aren't taxable properties, so we're concerned with what we can assess value out of, and obviously, what we can't, but these numbers are based off what we're available to, to.
Right now.
To do, yeah. The only, and this is obviously just us theorizing here, but the idea is if there's less land in Sterling to build or to do what have you, then that land becomes more valuable, which in turn would have an effect on the assessed value of lots of land. That would be the only thing, that would increase that aspect of it. But these figures that we have, this isn't, you know, the Assessors Office or myself or anyone just coming here, or the Board, saying, you know, we need to bump this. These are all numbers based off the Department of Revenue. So the Department of Revenue requires us to use sale figures from two years prior from here, that's so we have a nice set of data that we can run off of. Obviously, two years ago, you had COVID, you had a ton of people that were moving, that were able to work from home, that were moving westward, people that, you know, had money that other people couldn't compete with, or that they were willing to overbid, over-asking price. And when you do that, you are now at a sale price that is much higher than what the assessed value was. In turn, which is what we're dealing with now, we need to bring that number up to what the Department of Revenue requires us to have. That's called the assessment-to-sale ratio. They typically want us within 90% of that, more so, more closer to 95%. So that's where numbers have to get bumped to accommodate with what the state's requiring based off past sales. That's what we have, yeah.
And are you all done with the assessments in town now, as far as, what was the average, did you say, 300,000?
The average single-family residence?
Yeah.
Currently? It is currently, across the board, $525,400.
Interesting. Anybody else have any questions besides Roseanne? Roseanne, quick?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I hear what you're saying, and it's set by the state and all that other stuff. I agree with that, and there's nothing that you can do about that, but can we look at it for perhaps next year in a different light, so that we take farming out of this equation, and so that the tax rate is spread across the board, you know, fairly? Because this is, this is really, you know.
He already explained that.
Huh?
He already explained that.
Well, I know, but for next year.
Yeah.
It would require a change in state law.
Right.
And we should legislate you to do that. It's not going to happen, so.
I'm willing to look into whatever suggestion you have and see what I can do and do my due diligence between what we have for our position and through the state. So whatever you'd like to do, and I can give you a car to before we head out, and I'll, whatever you'd like to do, if you'd like to speak with me or see what we can work out, I'm totally fine with all that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting how industry and commercial would react to that also. I mean, because we're always begging, pleading, groveling for industry and commercial to move into town, and are we going to scare them off in that respect?
That's the question.
So that's another, that's another avenue to look at, so.
Just to reiterate what Rob said, is the two big industries in town, one just sold, and that was one of the reasons why a lot of that bumped up, and that was Pandol Perkins, and it sold for a very large sum of money, much larger than I think we had it valued at. And the other one is LKQ, which has a 70,000-square-foot building on Chalks Road. And there's an addition that, I don't know that it's going to happen, but there is an allowance for another 70,000-square-foot building on that property. So if that happens, that's going to be a big jump. And the other one is, the big one in town is Sterling Village, and that, that is somebody, they come to us every single year looking for a tax rate shift, not a shift, that's a long word, but they're looking for a bait.
I was going to say, they want to pay more?
Yeah, no, they don't, no, they don't. They own a couple of other facilities elsewhere, and so they are successful in getting their taxes reduced in those other communities, and they feel we should accommodate them.
But you all know how to say no, right?
We have not, yeah. That's right, that's right.
That's good news.
And on the residential side, Northgate, those up on the Leominster border, has also been a big residential.
And that's, they got one more building to build up there, don't forget, you know, so.
So we don't have, we have 100% on the first building, second is in construction, and then eventually the first.
The second one is done, and I think they just released the auction. They just had an auction for the people that wanted to get into that.
But it's not, not open to residential?
Technically, it's, as far as assessed value.
The other one is still under works to be built, I believe, is it?
All right. Okay, so what the Assessors are asking us to do, Kirsten and David, is to vote for one, number one, on the tax shift, which means no tax shift. So the Sterling Board of Selectmen, I would entertain a motion that the Sterling Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, we have to change this. The Select Board votes in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40, Section 56 as amended. It wasn't my idea. The percentage of local tax level, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property, relative to setting the fiscal year 2024 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.000 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.000, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Someone else?
Second.
All those in favor?
You and I.
Krantz and I. All right, thank you, Rob, Mr. Murray, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you very much. Good luck. And then I would entertain a motion to exit our public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
You and I.
Krantz and I. And then we're looking to make an appointment from the Select Board to the Board of Health Audit Committee. As you all know, we went to town meeting a couple of weeks ago, and citizens voted to do an audit on our Board of Health, and part of their request was that there be somebody from Finance, someone from the Select Board, somebody from the petitioners, plus one other resident, right?
Yes.
Just the three? And that's to look for somebody to actually do the audit. Okay, so any hands raised here at the table for the Select Board?
I think if you read how it's worded, I cannot participate in that.
Okay.
Seriously, because of the connection with the accounting office.
Okay. All right. That sounds like a plan?
So that leaves...
I'll do it. It's just a search committee at this point, and I can do that. I don't have a problem doing that. You have Board of Health, so...
So I'm in favor of that.
So entertain a motion to appoint Maureen Cranson to the Audit Committee for the Board of Health. So moved. I was quick. All those in favor?
You and I.
None.
Cranson, debatable. So then we're going to take the Town Administrator's report, basically because eventually we're going to have to go into executive session, and as we do that, we won't be coming back to our public session. So Mr. Bill? You got a cartoon?
Yes.
Too young.
In the signature folder will be a letter to Monty Tech thanking them for the work they did at Peg's Pond. That's just about... Or it is completed now. We have a couple of things on our end to finish up. We did just install the benches and tables last week. The MVP grant, as I brought forward, we do have a couple of projects. One of the things that we have to do is reconvene the MVP core group, which is the Town Administrator, Fire Chief slash EMD, the Fire Department Lieutenant, Senior Center Director, Planner as a resident, and the DPW Director. Of the seven, only three are the same people, so get everybody caught up. So we'll be doing that. We'll be looking at a couple culvert projects, a couple which we obviously identified from the rainstorm incident in September, which opened our eyes to a couple items and think that they would be probably very good grant items to go for. We're still working and moving forward with the best practices grants that we got from the Community Compact. Next couple of weeks, we'll be getting the capital requests, and after the new year, we'll get the budget requests from the departments. We'll really start drilling down on that, you know, as we get into the later winter and spring. Still going to the weekly check-ins with the Rural Policy Director, who sends us different grant opportunities and information for different rural towns.
Nancy Angobi, right?
Yes.
You can slow down, you know.
Okay. From 2020, we do have the RFP for the field study out, Griffin and Muddy Pond Fields. That due date is December 1st, so we'll look at identifying the best use of the fields behind the schools and a little further down on Muddy Pond. We did get it out for RFP back in 2020, and then basically a couple of weeks after, everything shut down, so it kind of went by the wayside. So get things updated and see where things stand. So the holiday schedule, typically the day after Thanksgiving, we have closed, and people have used either vacation or personal time for four hours. Last year, we did close on the Wednesday in the afternoon, so that would be up to you folks on that part. You can wait till the end. The other thing that we received today, the Trails Grant, MRPC is looking at doing a joint one with 10 towns that do not have a trail vision study, so doing that as a collective one to see how we can connect trails through the area and through the region. It would require a $1,000 match per town. One of the things that we brought to town meeting last year was an article for grant match, so the funds could be taken from there. The other option was to use some of the GIS time, but Stephen does use that through MRPC, so I don't want to give that up in lieu of the $1,000 funding item, which is why we had that article there. We also received a letter of resignation from a member of the Board of Health, so we will get that advertised ASAP along with the petitioner, one for the Board of Health Audit, so two separate things. So what we... I have done in the past on elected boards is that the board that has the vacancy, we would obviously accept the applications, have them kind of screen and give recommendations up, but obviously the statute says until the next election, so it would be until May. So we'll get that up and posted and also send a letter off to the Board of Health letting them know that's kind of how we're going to proceed, and they can screen who they get for candidates and move things forward, and then we need to appoint somebody through the election in May, so I think that's like the 13th.
Well, hopefully, one of those 600 people that signed off on the Board of Health Warren article will step up, or some of the 200 people. That'd be... I mean, it looks like a lot of people were interested, so hopefully that happens.
We did have an election yesterday, so we do have a new state senator who will get sworn in. I want to just thank the town clerk and the election staff, those folks that spent, what, 13-plus hours over there. It was a little better turnout than the primary with just over 1,000 people, I think. Does that sound right?
Yeah, it was a 15% turnout as opposed to the two.
Just 13, yeah.
That's great.
So that's good. SMLD put out new flags around the common today. The ones that we did have were a little torn and tattered and faded, so working with Matt and Ryan, we got that done today. End of next week, I will be at the Managers Association Fall Conference. Will be doing a presentation with the other members of the Ethics Committee Friday morning. I think those are the major things I have. MVP grant and the others. The Trails Grant would be things that do fall into our master plan, I know. And where'd you go? Angela, you would come in and talk to Stephen the other day, and I had just mentioned to him afterward that I had printed out the implementation chapter and had some notes back in the spring, so we put it all together. I sent it off to these folks today, but there's about 60% of the items that are in there we have some sort of comment on, so some action, whether it's proposed land use things with zoning changes, infrastructure changes, whatever it is, so about 60% of them we're working on.
I was just asking.
Sure.
I found out from Stephen that it was the responsibility of the Select Board to pull together this implementation committee. Is that going to happen?
That's up to the Select Board. It's not a requirement. It would be a choice of theirs, but...
I just thought that we put so much effort and time and work into the master plan, it would be really a shame not to have an implementation committee and get that stuff going.
The stuff is going.
First of all, without...
Stuck in more than one little question.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
Angela Gradrow, 69B, St. Row.
Okay. So a lot of what... And have you revisited Stephen yet?
I did.
Okay. So the implementation committee, really, most of it goes to each of the different segments of that. So like the DPW has a lot of that master plan.
But my understanding, Maureen, was that after the master plan was completed, that the responsibility, and I thought it was for the Planner, which Stephen corrected, that there was supposed to be an implementation committee pulled together to implement the outcome of the master plan. And my other understanding, and I don't know if this is accurate, but that it should not be all the members that were part of the master plan, but other people that were interested in implementing the master plan, so.
All right, so we can put that on an agenda, and we can talk about it, and we can let it marinate.
I spoke to Stephen as well, and he had mentioned that in Westminster, they did not have an implementation committee, but what they did was all of the boards and committees that were responsible for certain action items. They invited them to their Select Board meetings once a month. They would have a different Board or Committee to kind of update everyone where they are with their action items.
Yeah.
We could do that, possibly. I would... I would maybe hold off on a committee until after the holidays, just because I doubt we'd get a lot of...
While you're marinating that, and this is going to be totally off the topic, but it's important, we consider a Facebook page so that people...
Okay, Angela, that's way off the topic.
Okay, but it just... We need it so people get information about what's going on.
They can go to our website, but thank you.
Website's not worker-friendly or user-friendly. That needs to be tweaked. Tweeted.
Yeah, well, you would... No, that's at Sterling Community Center. We have nothing to do with it for us. We've talked about this. We've talked about it at EDC. To do it is more than just putting up the Facebook page. First of all, you have to have somebody manage it. You have to keep it up. You can't shut up... Somebody suggested shutting off comments. You can't shut off... You can shut off comments, but what good is it if you shut off comments when you're giving somebody? I know personally that taking care of a Facebook page, and I don't mean my personal Facebook page, I don't do much there, but I do for where I work. I do all of the marketing on there, and I answer all of the meta, and it's not something that, you know, who's going to do it? You could volunteer to do it, which is great, except what happens when Angela doesn't want to do it? And then what happens when the next person doesn't want to do it? It's not like a really... I mean...
But can I just say this?
And plus, it's... Plus, it costs money. It's not free in that... You hear this, Mr. King? In that we have to archive it. That's all public record. So we have all the information, and we try to keep up as best we can on the webpage. I know some people don't feel as though the webpage is that easy to navigate.
But can that be improved? There are also many...
They try to improve it on a daily basis, every department. So this is not a discussion that's been on our agenda. It's not a discussion, I don't know about you guys, but it's not a discussion I'm willing to have. I already have the discussion at the EDC meetings, and that wasn't supported there either when it was brought forward. So I don't know. Kristin, you want to jump in on that?
I mean, I think it's worth putting it on an agenda.
Okay.
Because I think with the lack of print media these days, most people go to find their news and everything on Facebook. It's just an unfortunate part of how things have changed, right? That's where everyone goes. And most other towns... So people are finding it. You have to... You have to want to go onto the website, right, and look for the information. Facebook, everyone's on it. It's kind of there. Whether you're scrolling, you find it whether you want to or not, so you can learn a lot about what's going on in your community.
So we'll put it on our next agenda, and we can discuss it, and you can support it, and you can take care of it. Thanks, Kristin. Yes, well, all right. Thank you. Yep. Okay, moving along. This Saturday, 10:30, in front of the Butrick Building, there will be gathering for our Veterans Day Parade. Everybody is invited to come and give your public thanks to our veterans. They'll be walking from the... They call it marching. I call it a walk, stroll, over to Memorial Park, where they'll have a little ceremony for our veterans. Be a little different this year without Mr. Temple, but we could do this. Also, we have the Library Craft Fairs coming up on November 18th. The funds from this support the library and some of their programs, and they have some really good-looking vendors. If you watch Facebook, you'll see Nancy Bree's billings has everything posted. Also, I should give a shout-out to the Spooky Walk. Started years ago with the Village Green. They still put it out there, but what's really impressive are all of the departments and the people that participate, all the downtown vendors, people that aren't downtown that still come downtown and give our little Orchards candy. You have, you know, the Fire Department, the DPW, the police, obviously, all of them go above and beyond to support this community event. And then, again, thank you to the election staff. That was a long day. A long day.
It's long, no matter how many people come out to vote. The work for our town clerk and the workers are the same, so.
You get free lunch, though, right?
Yeah.
Anything from you, Kristin?
Of course. Bill, just a question on the MRPC Trails Grant. Are these trails through conservation land? Is that what their target is?
Some are. I think it would also help, like the Greenways, you know, and their part too, so I think it looks at your inventory of what you have. You know, obviously, we have our open space, so a lot of that, and try and see if there's a way to connect the towns within the MRPC region.
And secondly, I want to thank the poll workers, and also I talked to Kathy Farrell last night at the election, and she's a little concerned that next year, there's going to be four elections, and she may not have enough poll workers. So for all of you that would like to work at the polls, please reach out to Kathy. She'd be more than happy to hear from you.
Yes, Rosie Ann?
Can I ask a question about the Greenways? Will those be included... Will it be included in their space or accommodations for handicap people? Because right now, when all the rail trails, the walking paths and what have you, are not necessarily conducive to people who are not fully 100% able. So there are people with walkers, there are people with crutches, there's people with wheelchairs, there's people like that that really, they're not... It's not really accessible for them, or knee problems or ankle problems, whatever. Will that include that? And if it doesn't, could you...
The update to Peg's Pond obviously made it ADA compliant. The Trails... I don't know where Sue went. Oh, there you are. You know, the Trails Grant for the Hall Ave parcel would be making it more ADA compliant, and the Mudget Orchard has an ADA or at least a parking area that would be compliant, so some of them are, and obviously, the goal was to continue to improve those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mama, anything?
I just saw someone in a wheelchair on the rail trail behind the mill today. Just saying.
Yeah. Paige might be talking about some of the other...
The town trails more than the Greenways.
Yeah, town trails. Some of them are rough, whether you're healthy or not. Okay, anything else? Richard, Mr. King?
Also.
Okay, then we are going to exit our public meeting to go into an executive session for MGLC 30A, Section 7, to discuss litigation with the McLeod property. So I would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Negative.
All those in favor?
None.
None.
Cranson, I. And just know that we will not be coming back after this except to adjourn.
Thank you.